Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. This regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Spring Independent School District is officially called to order on Tuesday, September 8th, 2020. On March 16, 2020, Governor Greg Abbott granted a request by Attorney General Ken Paxton to temporarily suspend a limited number of open meeting laws to the extent necessary to allow telephonic and video conference meetings in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus. Accordingly, due to health and safety concerns, this meeting is being conducted by--
Can I be heard? This is Ms. Durant?
The time-- Yes, you can. The time is now 7:01 PM. Board trustees present are Winford Adams Jr., Kelly Hodges, Deborah Jensen, Justine Durant, Jana Gonzalez, Dawn Davis, and myself, Rhonda Newhouse. I would like to ask everyone to mute their microphones unless speaking to. Thank you. Our first item on the agenda this evening is our superintendent's remarks. So at this time, I would like to recognize our superintendent of schools, Dr. Rodney Watson.
Thank you, President Newhouse. A good evening, President Newhouse, and all the other trustees that are here with us tonight.
I can't hear anybody else.
Can you hear me, Justine? We can hear you.
Jeremy, am I muted? I'm good now, thank you. Sorry.
So today, we entered our final phase of welcoming our teachers and staff back to their respective campuses. Now, although over 500 teachers chose to provide remote instruction from their classrooms before today, we celebrate today the over 1,600 dedicated teachers who are now providing remote instruction from their classrooms. My cabinet and central office administration applaud all of our teachers and the awesome job they're doing providing remote instruction for thousands of students enrolled in Spring ISD. In recent conversations and emails and elevates, some of our teachers are having to make some difficult decisions as we carry out our district's vision, as we know, to be a district of choice, known for high-quality academics with innovative and specialized programs that meet the needs of all students in a positive learning environment. I truly believe our teachers want what's best for our students, and we will continue to make the available accommodations that support our employees, but grow the achievement of our students. As the husband of a teacher in a neighboring district, as well as the father of two kids who attend Spring ISD, I understand firsthand how difficult some of the decisions they have to make can be. We only ask that we continue to work together as we make our vision visible. Last Thursday during our work session, we had a very lengthy discussion to really talk about our transition back to in-person learning for all families who selected that option and want to come back, as indicated in our poll survey results. We were able to share the latest data regarding COVID-19 within Harris County, Spring ISD zip codes, as well as the top 10 zip codes of our Spring ISD employees. We're encouraged by the positive trending we're seeing both in Harris County and within Spring ISD. We encourage everyone to remain focused on our health and safety protocols as we begin opening our schools for our first students as we start our transition process back. We also heard the details of our asynchronous plan that will be submitted to TEA. So as you can see, we've been extremely busy ensuring that we're doing the work of educating our students, but also meeting the needs of our community as well as our staff in the process. We appreciate the continued support that we receive from the board as we educate the over 33,000 students here in Spring ISD. This does conclude my report for today, and I'll turn it back over to you, Ms. Newhouse. I think you're muted, Ms. Newhouse.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you again, Dr. Watson. Tonight, we have the Spring Independent School District Foundation with us tonight. Dr. Watson, will you introduce them?
Absolutely. It's always nice to be able to introduce partners within Spring ISD and what we call our family in Spring ISD. I remember this summer, I had the opportunity to have a conversation with Mr. Gray and Sandra, and they asked, "What can we do to support the school district during this time?" And we talked about hotspots. And much like they always do, all we have to do is ask, and they run with it. They run with anything that we need. So it's my pleasure tonight to introduce Mr. Ken Gray and Mr. Stephen David. I'll turn it over to you, Ken.
Thank you very much, Dr. Watson. Dr. Watson, President Newhouse, and all of our distinguished board members. It's a pleasure for me to be here and come before you this evening as we begin the 2020-2021 school year. As you know, COVID-19 pandemic with social distancing has presented a major need here within our district. We were made aware of the technology deficiency within the district and the need for hotspots for families within the district. We set out to try to do our best to try to rectify that. And in cooperation with the Harris County Education Foundation, we were able to secure a grant for $15,000 that would be able to fully support 63 hotspots and a year's worth of service of each of those hotspots. These hotspots would be able to go out to a particular family. And with many families having more than one student within that particular family that attends Spring ISD, we're not just looking at 63 students that would benefit from having these hotspots, but a family of 63. So we feel that-- or we at least hope that this will be able to rectify and give the ability to lessen that education gap and that technology gap that we have within those students. The Education Foundation will continue to support the district as best we possibly can. We just hope that this 15,000 is-- will be able to be put to use, and we can get them in the hands of the 63 families that will be most able to benefit from them. I would like to introduce, at this time, Mr. Stephen David with the Education Foundation of Harris County for a few words. Stephen?
Thanks, Ken. Can everybody hear me?
There you go.
Bunch of head nods. Good. Thank y'all so much for letting me speak tonight. I'll only take, hopefully, just a minute of your time. But as y'all know, HCD exists to support the districts across Harris County, and we're thrilled that the Education Foundation of Harris County partnership has allowed us to find yet another way to help our local districts through the Partners in Education program. I would like to personally thank Superintendent Colbert, as well as the HCD trustees, to help making this program a reality. We were allocated a pretty significant sum of money to help support the school districts throughout this school year. And what we decided to do was treat this as very similar to a venture fund, which is more akin to my professional experience. And what we wanted to do is take a small chunk of the money, and what we ended up allocating was about $220,000, so a little under half. But take that money and allocate it over school districts based on kind of a very discreet need, as enumerated by y'all. So allowing the education foundations of the school districts, as well as feedback from the boards, to help us directionalize that money to the specific need. And I am so proud and happy that we were able to award $15,000 for the mobile Wi-Fi hotspot program. As the son of two educators, I know that a lot of times, teachers dip into their pockets to make sure that students have the supplies that they need and they can have the education that they need. But in these kind of unprecedented times, it's really nice to see school districts and us being able to help those school districts meet the needs for kids to learn at home, as well as provide that internet service for their homes. So I very much appreciate y'all allowing us to give you money, and I thank y'all for all of the hard work that you do. And I'm happy to answer any questions, but otherwise, I'll wait a few minutes and then drop off. And I hope that all of y'all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you very much, Stephen. I would, at this time, like to present to Dr. Watson this check of $15,000 for use for mobile hotspots for our high school students and our families with high school students within them in Spring ISD.
Hopefully, you can see my hands accepting it and taking it.
Thank you so very much, Ken. And also, I understand we have some members of the Spring Independent School District Foundation Board on our Zoom meeting tonight. So I also want to share a big thank you to them and let them know that we are very appreciative of all of the support that you give. Stephen, I'd like you to know that our foundation for Spring works hard for our district. So let Harris County know that when they come for asking you for help, they are working for all of our students, faculty, and employees for Spring ISD. Thank you, David, to Harris County Department of Education as well. Thank you. Now, I appreciate all of the applause. I will now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees approve the proposed grant funds as presented by the Spring Independent School District Education Foundation.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the proposed grant funds as presented by the Spring ISD Education Foundation.
Do I have a second?
Yes, Ms. Durant. Second's the motion.
Thank you. It has been moved by Deborah Jensen and seconded by Justine Durant that the Board of Trustees approve the proposed grant as presented by the Spring Independent School District. I will call for a vote at this particular time. Winford Adams Jr., Kelly P. Hodges. Ms. Hodges, if you'll mute yourself. Unmute. Yes, now. Thank you. Deborah Jensen? Justine Durant? Jana Gonzalez? Jana? I think she needs to unmute.
I think her screen is frozen.
Okay. Dawn Davis? And myself, Rhonda Newhouse, votes aye. I can see Ms. Gonzalez?
Aye. I was having connection issues, but aye.
Thank you. We appreciate that. So the motion carries unanimously. Thank you again to everyone. Now, I know we had some guests on, so I wanted to make sure that we had them make that presentation upfront while we had Stephen available with us. But the Board, I always like to ask the Board for comments after the superintendent has made his comments. So I will circle back and now ask the Board of Trustees if you would like to have any comments tonight.
Well, this is Debbie Jensen. I would like to comment on the $15,000 we just received. This is more than just hotspots for some kids. This is really attacking the digital divide in our district, really making it a cultural norm that all students deserve to have a good connection to the internet and to the resources there. And Mr. David, I thank you so much for supporting this. One of the unintended consequences of this, I've noticed, is that parents are getting so much training in the use of different apps that we use and instruction. So this has gotten to be the whole village here that's connected. Thank you so much.
Madam President, I wanted to comment on the issue that Dr. Watson brought up as it relates to concerns from our teachers about returning to school. I recall that when we first saw the planning for returning to school, we were very careful to poll all stakeholders, and we included teachers when we evaluated how we wanted to come back. And I went back and reviewed the minutes, and it appears we did not include teachers in our polling on this second go-around as we were moving forward with opening. I just think it's important. I hear what Dr. Watson is saying, and I know he's going to get the ACE committees involved in making sure that we're keeping teachers safe. But I do think it's really important that as we move forward into a process like this, that we are listening to our teachers and taking into account their concerns. And I just want to voice that and let Dr. Watson know that I support him in the district, but I will be paying very close attention as I continue to hear from teachers that are very concerned as it relates to their health issues and whether the FF-CRA is sufficient to handle that. Thank you.
This is Trustee Durant, and I apologize. I was having connection issues at the beginning, and I didn't hear all of Dr. Watson's comments. But I did want to echo my fellow colleague, Trustee Adams', concerns. We have received several emails, and I've talked to several staff members that have a concern. And I'm wondering, is it possible to perhaps send out some sort of a quick question survey to make sure that we capture that feedback that we didn't get from our teachers at this time? It's never too late, and to address any concerns that may come from that feedback.
This is Trustee Hodges, and I concur with my colleagues, Adams and Durant. The information received by email was a little bit-- it was a little cause for concern, and there were some-- I could read the concern in the email. So I would also like to know, I think it was mentioned that we did survey the teachers. I'd like to know if we could maybe review what that survey entailed and what those questions were and the percentage. Because from the information received, doesn't appear that that is the consensus from the teachers that they're ready to return. I'd just like to review that data if we have any.
And of course, this Trustee Davis, my comments are the same. I see quite a few correspondence and emails on the same topic. And I'd like to have more information on, are we communicating to our employees? Are we, do they have a basic understanding of what they have to do to get approved to be virtual or whatever? I want to know what the process is. I know we got a team in place that's supposed to be reviewing these applications and so forth. I want to know the process. So, these employees and some of the former teachers I worked with that reached out to me, they were still 25 years. I have a concern. Thank you.
Thank you, board members. And I think we all have that same concern, and we will be addressing it at a later time. So thank you for your comments tonight. Our next item is our recognition. Our first recognition is the Employee Excellence Award, winner of the 2019-2020 school year. Employee Excellence Awards are given to employees who model the district's core values and showcases extremely performances on their job. These awards are part of a monthly recognition program that highlights and acknowledges positive employees' behavior and outstanding performance. Each month during the school year, the Board selects a monthly winner. At the end of the school year, the Board selects an annual winner. Tonight, we have the honor of announcing and recognizing our Employee Excellence Award winner for the 2019-2020 school year. And I am happy to see that that person is on our Zoom tonight. I will tell you a little bit about her. Yes, it is a she, and we're excited to talk about this person. This person works tirelessly to ensure that the student data that is used and created in the district every day is maintained and that the systems that we're using are in such integrated parts of a nearly-- that nearly every campus and district employee works hard with every day. She manages the security of the SIS system, ensures that we roll from one year to the next seamlessly, and she's always available to assist others when they need help. This person never speaks up for herself. She comes in early, stays late often, and is always on call when something goes wrong. She fights for the district with software vendors and even TEA on occasions. She's been doing this for a very long time, and rarely has she been recognized for all of the work that she does. She is one of those persons who makes so much go right, that you never know when it's going wrong, because she was on top of it and taking care of whatever the issue might be. I think that sometimes, working in Spring ISD can feel to be a thankless job, yet to her, you would never know that for the work that she does. She is the cheerleader of the technology department, and she deserves to be recognized, and we want to recognize her tonight. Sherri Osgood, I think you may know by now that I am speaking of you. Sherri participates in Spring ISD initiatives. She's in charge of the employee engagement activities for the technology department. And recently, she even set up TV in the broadcast room for positive messages, celebrating important information. She maintains this display daily, in addition to all the other things that she does on her job. So as long as we have Sherri here, working those long days and nights, we feel very good about our technology department. Sherri, I'd like to say congratulations from the Board. You are the winner of a $1,000 check from the Spring Independent School District Foundation for the Board's Employee of the Year. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm very surprised.
Sherri, I want to let you know I have your check, and it will be delivered to you tomorrow at work.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Sherri, please let your family know how much we appreciate you. Usually, we have an opportunity to thank them and say hello to them, too. But due to the Zoom, we understand that, but we are happy to have you with us tonight. Thank you.
Thank y'all very much. I'm very surprised. Thank y'all. I enjoy working for Spring.
If I could just add, presenting these awards to the teachers is one of the highlights of our month, actually, as board members. And it was a very stiff competition, Ms. Osgood. So you really distinguished yourself, but there were some other excellent candidates who all received the awards when we went out. So it was really tough. So thank you again for your service.
Since Ms. Durant, I would also like to thank you for your service and all the hard work. And we can tell that you're very dedicated, and we'd like to let you know how much we appreciate that. Thank you.
And Trustee Davis, of course, I want to add my thanks. You've been incredible. I know you worked at this when I was an employee. So congratulations, and enjoy your money.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Our next recognition is a point of pride. So at this time, I'd like to recognize our Chief of Innovation and Communications, Tiffany Dunn O'Neal.
Good evening, President Newhouse, Dr. Watson, and the team members of the Board. We're excited to recognize Spring ISD Assistant Director of Athletics, Armando Jacinto, who was selected this summer to be the inaugural president of the Hispanic Texas High School Football Coaches Association. Coach Jacinto was chosen by the recently formed group's Board of Directors to serve a three-year term and help guide the organization as it establishes itself and grows. Since its official founding earlier this year, the association already has 600 members. With its aim to facilitate the increasing need for highly qualified Hispanic educators and coaches in Texas, the group will offer a hub of networking, mentorship, and career development. With more than 30 years' experience as a coach, athletic coordinator, and administrator here in Texas, Coach Jacinto is no stranger to helping others succeed. Here in Spring, he already facilitates a coach's learning series, a coach's leadership institute, and a young coach mentoring program. His contributions in Spring ISD have been many. You guys have seen him here before at our point of pride. It's not his first point of pride. And we are thrilled to share his talents as he makes an impact across the state with this exciting new organization. I hope everyone can maybe unmute their phones and join me in a big round of applause for Coach Armando Jacinto. Yay. So I know that Willie's on the phone, and I know our Assistant Director, Armando Jacinto of Athletics, is on here, too, receiving this award. He was able to come by my office today and get his little plaque, which joins his other plaques and his many awards in his office. And I know his wife is on the call with us today. She was at our board meeting. And just as a little memory to everybody, I think she teared up at our board meeting at his last point of pride. I think I saw some tears in her eyes. So we're really happy to have her here with us this evening. But I know Willie wanted to make a few remarks. But as we think about our points of pride, as you remember, our points of pride are really for those recognitions of people within Spring ISD that are going out and making a name for themselves and bringing our name along with them at the state and national level. This is truly a thought leadership role to have. Our Assistant Director of Athletics leading this new organization here in Texas is really a thought leadership role. But it's also truly a leadership role for the young men in the district who look up to him and see him leading this organization, leading this Hispanic organization that are really trying to grow our coaches and those leaders across the state that our young men can look up to. So I know Willie had a few words to say, and then I'd like to let our Assistant Director, Armando Jacinto, say a few words to Willie.
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to say how proud I am of him and how happy I am. Happy for him as a friend. Armando is just always there for everybody and will do anything for anybody. But proud of him as a colleague. This position was appointed by a bunch of professionals-- This this position was, you know, appointed by a bunch of professionals, and they found the most qualified leader they could find and appointed him for a three-year, a three-year term. Most of the terms in our business is a is a one-year term. One is, you know, you learn the ropes, and the next one, you take over. But he's going to be taking over this program for the first three years. And his vision and his leadership, they couldn't have picked a better leader. So I'm just proud of him and happy for him. Thanks, Armando.
Armando, do you want to share a little bit about the organization with us so we can learn? I knew I knew a little bit, but I'd love for you to share kind of about the organization and your work.
Yes, when it kind of started like as a group me that I was invited invited by one of my former players and asked me if I wanted to be, it said it's a group me, group chat, me chat that with all Hispanic coaches. I said, yeah, I'd be welcome to do that. And as and as with the pandemic, that was the main reason, and people just started jumping on. And we had Zoom meetings with college coaches, where they conducted clinics, pro coaches, and some of our former guys that they coached with us, they did some clinics. We also had some athletic administrators that did some speaking roles. And then as people started joining in, they they it just it just kind of snowballed with the pandemic. People had more time to participate in things like this, and it just started snowballing. So some of the founding members, they they had tried to do something a couple of years ago, but it didn't really take off the ground. But with with the pandemic, they were able to get more people involved, and they they decided to form, you know, officially form an organization. And and they included me with the founding members. And when we started talking about criteria for leadership, they were they felt that the leader, the president or the leaders of the president of the organization should have somebody, somebody that's been successful, that has experience, that's highly network influenced, and also someone that comes from a highly reputable district. And then kind of like you said, just to piggyback on what you said, Ms. Dunn, that this is also a testament to Spring ISD, because that shows how our district is perceived by other coaches in the fraternity around Texas, because that was another reason why they selected me, along with the other characteristics they were looking for in the leader, was being in the thirty, the thirty-fourth largest district in the state and being the one of the assistant, one of the administrators of leaders of that athletic program. That was one of another underlying reason why they selected me. So this is also, like I said, a testament to Spring ISD and how we are perceived in the state academically and athletically. So, you know, and like you said, that's this, you said earlier, it's a testament for our district of me being selected for this position.
Well, we're super proud of it. I don't know if anybody else has any comments. I wish we were in person, because this is a really big deal. I wish we were in person, but I don't know if any of our board members or any of our other cabinet members. This is really exciting for the district to have our leader in this leadership role at the district, at the state level.
So I keep saying, Ms. Dunn Oldfield and Coach Jacinto, that our goal is to make Spring ISD a district of choice, not just regionally, but statewide. And in choosing Coach Jacinto, I think we're living up to that promise. It's particularly impressive that they chose you to be the inaugural president, so that you can set that high bar for everyone that follows behind you. It's an awesome responsibility, but I know you're up to the challenge. So once again, congratulations.
Thank you.
Just Trustee Ha, just congratulations, and this is a huge, huge honor. As a student athlete, I know the importance of the leadership and what you do to cultivate students and to encourage them, and I applaud you for all that you do. Congratulations.
Thank you.
That concludes our points of pride. I'll just say Willie Amendola and Armando came by my office today to receive the award, but they were out busy, visiting our campuses, visiting their coaches and supporting their coaches as they reopen athletics in the safest way for our families. So a big, you know, shout out to them today. They were really busy making sure that our athletics programs open safely for our students. So thank you.
Can I say one more thing? Can I say one more thing? I just want to thank the President Newhouse, the Board, Dr. Watson, and the Cabinet, and Coach Amendola for the support and encouragement and trust that y'all have in and with me and Coach Amendola, you know, to lead the athletic department. And I just want to say one thing about Dr. Watson. He was the first one that congratulated me. And as an employee, you know, that means a lot that he that he stays in touch with what what his employees are doing and accomplishments outside of what we do for Spring ISD. And I don't know if Dr. Watson remembers when he first was hired. I was, I don't know if I was the first one, but I was one of the first people that he hired with under Coach, with Coach Amendola's recommendation. And it really means a lot that that he was the first one to congratulate me on this selection. And and I just want to thank everybody for y'all's support, encouragement, and trusting me with Coach Amendola to lead that athletic department. Thank you. And my family and my wife, too.
Well, Coach, I was about to say now, behind every great man, there's always a greater woman. So let us say congratulations to your wife. If she would like to have a word to say, you are more than welcome. We appreciate you sharing Coach with us, because we know he's away from home quite a bit. And his new title is going to cause for him to be away from home even more. But as he represents Spring in his new position as well, we want to thank you for giving him to us for this. So thank you. Would you like to have anything to say?
She said we have something to say.
No, I just thank you all for recognizing him and giving him the opportunity as Assistant Athletic Director to to do what he loved doing and that's helping kids and helping anyone to be more successful, because he knows he knows exactly how hard it is to to move around and to try to make your accomplishments. So anything that he does is is fine with me. I understand the role, being a former coach and teacher myself, I understand the role and the love that you have for the students and for people in general to help them. So I'm just grateful to you all, giving him the opportunity and to recognize his hard work. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you. And again, thank you, Coach Amendola, for your support in this as well. We are very appreciative of our athletic department. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
And now for our next item of discussion. I'd like to recognize our Spring ISD Legislative Priorities Committee. So at this time, I'd like to recognize Board Trustees Committee, Lee Justine Durant.
Thank you, Trustee President Newhouse, and good evening to everyone. On the behalf of the Governance Committee, which was appointed by our president, myself, along with Trustee Adams and Trustee Deborah Jensen, strive to support the district around policies and procedures. And so the Governance Committee has previously provided the Board Tasby's Top Ten Legislative Priorities for the twenty twenty-one school year. And I hope that all of you have had an opportunity to review those top ten priorities. The Governance Committee has met, and I'm at this moment, I'm going to turn the meeting actually over to Dr. Deborah Jensen, who's going to walk through the top three priorities that the committee is recommending to the board as a body to capture your feedback and consensus. We looked at the top ten and tried to focus on which priorities best suited the needs of Spring ISD, our students, and our community. And at this time, I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Jensen.
Thank you, Ms. Durant. Before we start the new priorities, I just wanted to review our last set of priorities. Mr. Schaefer, can you put those up? Here we go. This is what is on our website, and this was our last set of priorities. School Finance, Assessment and Accountability, Student Safety, School Choice, and Teacher Benefits. Now, remember, these are not the vision and goals for the district. These are priorities where we think that we really need help legislatively from the state of Texas. And so we pick issues that we want to really promote. I would like to point out school finance. That is perennial. We're always asking for state support for unforeseen circumstances. And I'll bring that up in just a minute. Assessment Accountability. Testing is always something that is a high priority and that the state controls, so we need their support when we really want to test what should be tested. Student Safety. This has gotten to be a bigger issue now, hasn't it? And frankly, our county, Harris County, and I really want to thank our Chief of Police, Mr. Colbert, that they have been really keeping up a surprise of the pandemic situation and the school safety rain. School Choice is one I'm going to bring up again, and Teacher Benefits. We've made a major improvement in our own district with the use of Tasby, looking at all our salaries and doing a salary study and giving us a plan to make sure that we are providing fair and competitive salaries to everyone. Thank you, Jason. I just wanted to review what we had before. You can take that down. Now, this year's priorities. When the Governance Committee looked them over, several of the priorities that we did not choose as our prime focus were because it was funding, funding, funding. That's going to be a, Anne, are you laughing over there? You know, we always aren't going to need funding for different challenges that come up to our district. So we take that for granted. But the three Tasby priorities that we think that really are particularly suited to our district and really deserve our strong legislative push, where we contact our representatives and we encourage voters to vote on these issues. Our number one, retaining the right for school districts to advocate for themselves. To me, this is almost a First Amendment right for a school district, that we have the right to form groups and hire lobbyists and go to the legislature to promote our causes. That right now, this right that all businesses, other governmental agencies have, and they're considering taking it away from school districts. I think that's, this is a critical issue. The next issue I think that will be critical to our district is charter schools and vouchers. There is a charter school white paper that is out right now that is really eye-opening. A greater, sometimes twice as much a percent of a budget in a charter school will go to administration rather than teachers and instruction. And it is absolutely phenomenal, millions and millions of dollars that charter schools are given to advertise for themselves. Really, we need transparency with the voters in Texas to see how charter schools do not, on an average, perform better than public schools. And they have teachers with less experience. They can hire teachers who have no certificates, except for in bilingual and special ed. And there are many things that we really feel like we need to push. And the third one, and it's last but not least, one of the legislative priorities we would really like to push is promotion of cultural awareness and diversity and to provide training and awareness across Texas for all school districts. We have our own equity issue effort going on right now. Thank you, Dr. Inahosa, that you're part of this. And we just feel that this is an issue whose time has come and that we all need to get behind it, and we need to push it at local and state levels. So as we vote on what priorities we want for our school district for next year, the Governance Committee is just asking you to think about being able to advocate for school districts, having transparency, a level playing field between public schools and charter schools. And the other one is to promote awareness and diversity, and in our case, equity. I will hand it back over to Ms. Durant.
Yeah, I'm actually going to ask our other committee member, Trustee Adams, if he wants to add any additional comments around the recommendation.
You know, I think Dr. Jensen pretty much said everything that needs to be said on it. Again, I am really committed to pushing equity as a as a cultural norm in the district. I think Dr. Watson and his team are doing a really good job of that. But there are districts in the state where that's not a focus, and I think sometimes a little pushdown from the legislature helps with that, providing the training, providing the resources. You know, we talked about finance, and I think as a state, we're starting to get away from all the unfunded mandates, not quite all of them, but we're doing a better job in the legislature at that. And so that's that's my two cents for what that's worth. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Adams. And I'd now like to open it up to see if any other board members have any comments or concerns with the three priorities we are proposing.
Trustee Davis, first of all, thanks to the committee. Dr. Jensen, are you going to share that white page that we searched, we did? Are you going to share it with all the board members? I think that it came from the lag committee. That was one of our projects that was tasked. I'm sorry. I am on the lag. I'm the legal rep for Task费. And that was one of the projects that was given to us. It's about five pages. I'll be able to share with all the board members. And of course, I'm glad you got, I'm glad you all adopted our number ten. Our number ten was one of my agree tos, and I'm glad y'all adopted that one as part of ours, you know, at a state level, because we had we had ten top priorities. But I just want to thank you all for taking those two, those two of the ones that as a committee member for Task费, on the Legislative Committee, those two are the ones I was really fighting for, especially in our number ten, which you guys discussed tonight. So thank you very much. I greatly appreciate it. I feel excited to have y'all's support, because I'm definitely trying to do all across the state to push those those ten initiatives, but I know that Spring have adopted three of the ten. Thank you very much. Please share that white page with everybody, please. I'm sorry. I'm just expecting my president. It was okay with the president.
Okay, Trustee Davis, I have not shared that paper yet, because it looked like it was incomplete. It would look like it was a draft. I don't mind sharing it if everybody knows that this is really probably not quite the finished product. It's quite a paper. It's amazing.
That's correct. We still studying it. It is our first draft, but the information is still good. But it is a draft, and finally, the Legislative Committee is going to do the final product. But it's a draft, and we just want to get to, especially Dr. Jensen is so helpful. You know, she went through, and she highlighted a couple of things I took back to the committee at Task费 that she highlighted. So thank you, Dr. J, like you always, you know, doing things, you know, behind the power curve. Thank you. You can share. It is a draft, and please share it, please. It was okay with our president. I'm sorry. It was okay with the president.
Anyone else?
Captain Davis, that will be at the discretion of the Governance Committee.
We will forward it on, definitely. Any other comments? Any other comments? So, Madam President, just a point of order, would you like to adopt or propose a vote for those legislative priorities before I move on to our second item? Or do you want me to complete both items before we do that?
I'd like to stop and take a moment and address the item that is at hand, and that's our legislative priorities. So I will move for a motion to, for the Board of Trustees to approve the spring ISD legislative priorities as discussed. Do I have a motion?
I just have a question. Jeremy, Mr. Binkley, do we need to specifically say the priorities, or can we just say the priorities is discussed?
We can certainly say the priorities is discussed.
We're good.
Then I hand it over to you, Ms. Hodges, again.
Thank you. I move that the Board of Trustees approve the spring ISD legislative priorities as discussed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Davis, second. Are you the one for that? I was drawn by...
It's been moved by Kelly Hodges, second, by Winford Adams, that the Board of Trustees approve the spring independent school district legislative priorities as discussed. I will now call for a vote. Winford Adams, Jr.
Aye.
Kelly P. Hodges.
Aye.
Deborah Jensen.
Aye.
Justine Durant.
Aye.
Jenna Gonzalez. Donald Davis.
Aye.
And myself, Rhonda Newhouse, votes aye. So the motion carries unanimously. Thank you to our Legislative Committee. Ms. Durant, will you continue with your next item?
Absolutely. The next item I want to address was brought to the committee by several board members. And during the 2019-2086 legislation, Senator Donald Campbell and Harold Dutton proposed Senate Bill 2283 of the Election Code, which was an amendment during that legislative session in 2019, to expand the criminal history requirements for trustee candidates. However, the final version was not as strong as perhaps it should have been. And the Board, through Dr. Jensen, is considering working with our local legislators to introduce legislation which would strengthen that criminal language and requirements that was originally brought forth in that Senate bill, in the 2019 legislation. And so in the meantime, the Governance Committee has drafted language to include in our Board policy, BBA Local, creating some additional information around local criminal history and requirements. That information has been provided to the Board and the Board's packet, and we would like an opportunity to discuss this policy. It was recommended by our legal counsel that if you all wanted to have a depth conversation, that we would want to probably do that in a closed session. But I'd like to just go ahead and open up the floor for a conversation around other recommended changes that are in your packet for BBA Local, and then also yield to Dr. Jensen, who has done a lot of research around it. Debbie, Dr. Jensen?
When I was looking at the previous legislation, apparently, one reason why it got watered down is that people were bringing up what I call straw man arguments, an argument of an instance that never occurred. They would say, well, what if somebody cheated during a fishing tournament when they were young, and it was a felony, and then they could never be a trustee? I can assure you, a felony is the strongest level of crime in our judicial system. May I have Mr. Binkley chime in on this? As I understand it, there's certainly different levels of felony, but it's not just a minor offense. By the time you get charged with a felony, it's pretty major. Is that correct, Mr. Binkley?
That is correct.
Thank you. All right. So I was searching the internet for actual trustees who were behaving badly, I shall say, and the kind of felonies they have committed, and what I think should keep them off a school board, but that they were not kept off the school board. I have Gary Inman, a lawyer, and he was Schertz-Cibola Universal City Independent School District here in Texas. He embezzled from an elderly client of his, ended up having to pay the family $120,000 back to her after he embezzled her money. He was charged with two felonies, but then he got 10 years of deferred adjudication. I keep seeing this, that people do some, what I think are high crimes, and then they get off somehow. And at this point, we're not sure that deferred adjudication would be covered under the President Education Code. To me, a trustee who embezzles from an elderly client is not somebody you want to have fiduciary responsibility in your school district. That is one of the major roles of a trustee, is to really watch what is happening with our taxpayers' money, and to be absolutely honest with how it is spent and used. So that's my opinion, but I just thought you ought to hear about Mr. Inman. Another one I found was a trustee in Brownsville. And what she was doing was she was going to people when she was running for reelection or even not running for reelection, and she was asking for donations to her campaign committee. And it was understood that when she took these donations in, and they were big donations, thousands of dollars, that it was actually a bribe for her to pass, give certain people certain jobs in Brownsville. And it was, she did it for long enough that they brought the FBI in on her, and she tried to get a bribe out of the FBI informant, and that was the end of her. So, but she's another one, where right now, it's an indictment, and it's proceeding through the courts, but nothing says that she can't be a trustee when she commits a felony like this. So I just think it's really important to make that description of all of your different states of admitting to a felony, pleading guilty to a felony, and the subsequent action, that that needs to be much more robust than it is right now in the education code. And I will pass it back to Ms. Durant.
Thank you, Dr. Jensen. Trustee Adams, any comments?
So just to make the Board aware, part of our, so we had a discussion about a couple of different options. What Dr. Jensen just discussed was the legislative option. There was also a policy option. And so we, as a committee, decided against pursuing making this sort of change in policy because of the potential legal ramifications of that. But I just wanted to make everybody aware that there are some districts who have gone out on a limb and codified this in their policies. And so there is a potential for us to do that, it's a bit riskier, but that is something that we could consider in terms of sort of establishing common law, or contributing to helping to establish common law.
And just a point of clarity, we are recommending that we make that revision in BBA Local, it is in your packet for consideration. But at this point, I'm going to maybe weigh into our legal counsel on what direction we can take at this time. Do we continue our discussion, or do we need to go in closed session?
As far as receiving any legal advice, I would prefer to do that in closed session. And then if the Board does wish to adopt a first reading tonight, you can certainly do that after we've had a discussion in closed session.
Okay. So I wouldn't ask them, hopefully, everyone's had an opportunity to take a look at that that was provided in your packet, and we will have a more detailed conversation in closed session. Thank you, Mr. Binkley, and I'll turn it back over to President Newhouse.
Thank you, Ms. Durant, and thank you to the Governance Committee. There. Our next item is the Consent Agenda. To our guest on the Zoom, our Consent Agenda is listed in our, the items of the Consent Agenda, I should say, are listed on the agenda that is presented to the public. We discuss these items in detail at our work session on Thursday nights. So we have had plenty of discussion on the consent items. So at this time, I would like to entertain a motion to approve and adopt all of the items listed on the Consent Agenda.
President Newhouse, I move that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all of the items listed on the Consent Agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second, Ms. Gonzalez.
Thank you. It has been moved by Kelly Hodges, second, by Jenna Gonzalez, that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all of the items listed on the Consent Agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I will now poll the board members for their vote to approve and adopt all of the items listed on the Consent Agenda. Winford Adams, Jr.
Aye.
Kelly Hodges.
Aye.
Deborah Jensen.
Aye.
Justine Durant.
Aye.
Jenna Gonzalez. Donald Davis.
Aye.
And myself, Rhonda Newhouse, votes aye. The motion carries unanimously. The Board of Trustees will now recess this open session and convene in a closed meeting in accordance with Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.071, Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.072, Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.074, and Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.076. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the Board wishes to take as a result of discussions in the closed meeting will take place after the Board reconvenes in open session. The time is now 8:02 PM.
Trustees, I just...
We will now reconvene and resume the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. The time is now 10:05 PM. We will now address the items discussed during closed session. Are there any motions?
Madam President, I move that the Board approve the Superintendent's recommendation to terminate the contract of Erica Thomas upon finding that the employee failed to perform her contract without good cause, and authorize the superintendent or designee to notify the employee of the proposed termination pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code. I further move that the Board authorize the superintendent or designee to notify the State Board of Educator Certification that the employee failed to perform her contract without good cause, and of the action taken by the Board.
Do I have a second? It's been moved by Deborah Jensen and second by Justine Durant, that the Board approve the Superintendent's recommendation to terminate the contract of Erica Thomas upon finding that the employee failed to perform her contract without good cause, and authorize the superintendent or designee to notify the employee of the proposed termination pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code. I further move that the Board authorize the superintendent or designee to notify the State Board for Educator Certification that the employee failed to perform her contract without good cause, and of the action taken by the Board. I will now poll the Board on the vote for this item. Winford Adams, Jr.
Aye.
Kelly Hodges.
Aye.
Deborah Jensen.
Aye.
Justine Durant.
Aye.
Jenna Gonzalez. Donald Davis.
Aye.
And myself, Rhonda Newhouse, votes aye. The motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I move that the Board grant sidewalk and traffic movement easements along Bama Road to Harris County as discussed in closed session.
Do we have a second? It's been moved by Winford Adams, seconded by Kelly Hodges, that the Board grant sidewalk and traffic movement easement along Bama Road to Harris County as discussed in closed session. Is there any other discussion? I will now poll the Board for the vote on this item. Winford Adams, Jr.
Aye.
Kelly Hodges.
Aye.
Deborah Jensen.
Aye.
Justine Durant.
Aye.
Jenna Gonzalez. Donald Davis.
Aye.
And myself, Rhonda Newhouse, votes aye. Are there any other? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I move that the Board approve the first reading of BBA Local as presented by the Board Governance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Deborah Jensen, second by Winford Adams, that the Board approve the first reading of BBA Local as presented by the Board Governance Committee. Any other discussion? I will now poll the Board for their vote. Winford Adams, Jr.
Aye.
Kelly Hodges.
Aye.
Deborah Jensen.
Aye.
Justine Durant.
Aye.
Jenna Gonzalez. Donald Davis.
Aye.
And myself, Rhonda Newhouse, votes aye. The motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions? Hearing none, I would now like to turn this meeting over to our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Rodney Watson, for some additional update.
Thank you, President Newhouse. Just wanted to update everyone once again that we will be sending staff information, letting them know that we will be discontinuing our October intercessional date. So we will be having school on the October week for intercession. And then in October, we will be, at our work session, we will be coming back to you all, presenting you an updated calendar that is a more traditional calendar with an end date of June 4th, having 180 days in it. So we will be recommending going back to a traditional calendar with an end date that first week of June, June 4th. And so we'll update you and provide more details on that calendar at the October work session. But we will let our staff member, our staff know that we will be working on the October date and not having intercession. Thank you.
Thank you. Since there are no other items on tonight's agenda, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn
I move for adjournment.
I move for adjournment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Justine Durant, second by Kelly Hodges, that the Board of Trustees adjourn this meeting. I will now poll the board members for their vote to adjourn this meeting. Winford Adams.
Aye.
Kelly Hodges.
Aye.
Deborah.
Hi.
Jensen.
Hi.
Justine Durant.
Aye.
Jenna Gonzalez.
Aye.
Donald Davis.
Aye.
And myself, Rhonda Newhouse, votes aye. The motion carries unanimously. There is no further business. This meeting is officially adjourned at 10:14 PM.